Clerk, are you?
And President, we have one person in the waiting room. I'll let them in and then we'll be all set to go.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Let me know when you're ready.
Uh, man, President, all set. We are recording.
All right, let's call the meeting of the City of Tonawana Council's order. Can you please call the roll?
Newman.
Here.
Cameron Danner.
Here.
Rowden Stroh.
Here.
Mylon.
Here.
Cook.
Here. All right, let's go through the agenda. Council on the minutes. Are we good on that?
Yeah.
Questions on the bills? Any questions on it?
I think the questions we had were.
Were answered. All right, who wants the bills?
I'll take them in.
Mr. Mylon. Special event. July 31st.
I'll take him in.
Mr. Mylon. Another special event, the band show.
I'll take that one, Madam President.
Mr. Rowden Stroh. The alcoholic beverage resolution at the Intermodal Hub. Do we want to do council?
I think we should.
All right, the panhandling resolution. Council on that. Color pool roof replacement.
I'll take that, Madam President.
Mr. Rowden Stroh. And then the part-time inspector for color pool replacement.
I'll also take that one.
Okay. Mr. Rowden Stroh. And then next is the ordinance change for, we talked about it our last meeting, about the no standing and parking sign.
I'll take that, Madam President.
This is Cameron Danner. All right. Next is the resolution from the engineer about the Niagara River and Elkhick Creek docking facilities.
I'll take that, Madam President.
Ms. Cameron Danner. Uh, next is the CFA grant application. Do you want to do council?
Sure.
Are we good on that?
So number, I'm sorry, Madam President, number 11 is by the council?
11 is by the council, yes.
And number, resolution 10 is by Councilmember Cameron Danner?
Correct.
Thank you.
Council, do we have exec? Mayor, do you have exec?
I do that.
Okay, no exec. All right. Who crews in here? Mr. Morano.
Good evening. Let me just, first of all, President, Congressman Cook, Mayor Davis, and council members, I thank you for giving me the time tonight. I will keep it fairly brief. I'm gonna leave you. It was nothing derogatory towards Mayor Davis, I promise.
Thank you.
Give you these things too, and we're gonna, this looks a lot more than it is, and I'm not gonna go through it in certainly any great detail, but a lot of it you guys have heard before. I'm thinking I should have put it on the screen, but. Uh, the first thing I give you, I think is just a very positive thing that, well, speaking of microphone here, that this is our, looks at our, the first page looks at our.
I just want to, for those joining us virtually, at the microphone, we have Dave Morano, our city assessor. For those that are also joining us, Dave is our city assessor.
Thank you, thank you, Council President Cook. And what I want to show is on that spreadsheet, it's just, I think, some good news for the city of Tonawana. And, you know, we just finished our roll. We finalized it on July 1, not really anticipating many changes. We don't have any big arpeghts or anything out there. But it showed with growth, and this is all what I call organic growth, because this is not a result of us doing the reval or anything like that. The, you know, we added $3.4 million in total assessed value. Now, total assessed value is assessed value without any exemptions or anything on it. But the important number on the total tax rule, we added $5.5 million to our assessment. And this is a result of, you know, some of the new developments we've had, things like 72 East Niagara, things like the apartments on Delaware, things like continued improvement in some of our other properties, like Prescott Provisions, and certainly in the wide, we had a number of residential properties expanded, improved rehab. So it's a good thing. It's a testament to not only the six of you up here, but all the members of our city government, that our residents are investing in the city and, and putting money, putting their money back into the city, which I think is very important. Now, what I want to talk to you about today, I have my notes here. Sorry, I developed a planner fashion. I guess you're like, I haven't seen the podiatrist yet, so it's like, I'm tipping a little bit. Bear with me, but. I want to talk to you about the need to do a citywide reassessment project in 2023. We talked about this time last year. Uh, and certainly, you know, we're in the throes of COVID and the issues, the various financial issues that many of the municipalities were facing. But it is, I think, critically important that we talk about getting the project going for 2023 now. I'm gonna touch on a few things. There's some things in this deck that we're gonna go through. Also attached to the deck is a lot of backup material that will assist you, but a couple of things are happening here. We are continuing to see inequity in our assessment. Now, the biggest fear the public has, and even some of you may have, is all reval adds to the tax level. A reval does nothing to. The tax levy, which you guys in your budgeting process, and the school district in their budgeting process, all the reval does is make sure that we fairly split up the tax levy that you guys set. And right now, what you're finding is it's not fair. It's, there's a lot of inequity. We haven't done an update date since 2018. And I want to talk to you about some of the reasons why we should. So I'm gonna go through the deck, and we'll go fairly quick here. So, you know, I got a couple of examples in this document, and you'll see on the second page of that, 138 Mullen was assessed for $96,000 or an equalized value because their rate is 86%. Talk about that. Sold in May, 21 for $155,000. 38.4% higher than the whole article. 52 Utica. Sold in May of 21 for $175,000. I could have gave you guys pages of these types of taxes. We have got properties selling significantly higher, certainly not only our assessment, but even our equalized assessment. We're gonna talk about that a little bit. The next page talks about, and which is how to find these, but 25 Plymouth. And 25 Plymouth was a property that's assessed at 113, equalized for $131,000, and it sold for $101,000. So while there's not a lot of those, we certainly have some of those that are selling in below what their market value should be. Let's talk about assessment equity. Assessment equity means everybody's assessed at their current market value. Everybody's gonna pay their fair share of the tax level. Nothing I do changes your level. Your levy, the school district's levy, is set by the needs and desires and goals of the city council or the school. What we try to do is we want to make sure everybody gets their fair share of the pie. What I always say, the simplest way to look at it is I don't control the size of the pie. You guys control the size of the pie, and the school board controls the size of the pie. I want to make sure that everybody is paying their fair share of that pie. Because New York State law is very clear. You pay property taxes based on the market value of your home. If you're not updating, or commercial property, if you're not updating that, you got a lot of inequity in the system. You know, what is a reassessment project do on page five? You know, it makes sure that, that you maintain equity. You want to make sure everybody's paying their fair share and that we have equity and the tax burden is fairly split. You know, page five, six talks about the New York State assessment, and what he has to have a fair assessment. Unfortunately for us, New York State is one of the three states surprised in the country that does not mandate year-to-year. Every other state or country does. New York State has this thing called an equalization. I don't blame New York State for the equalization rate, but what the equalization rate states is that everything is changing at an equal number. That's just not true. Certain neighborhoods grow faster or grow slower, certain styles, certain property classes and what have you. So when you put an 86% equalization rate and saying if you're assessed at 100, 100 into .88, it's about to be 112. That's not true. That is not really how it should work. And we have not done enough dates since 2018, and we really do, we really do. Page seven is a little more that we've talked about, but why do you want to do a project? Well, in addition to maintaining inequity, when you're not at 100%, the star exemptions that our property owners get are reduced. The veterans exemptions that our property owners get are reduced. That's New York State law. You lose kind of control over that equalization rate, and it doesn't work. Page eight gets into some of the specifics regarding the city of Tonawana. We see that our equalization rate dropped from 92% in 2020 to 86% in 21. A decline in equalization rates indicative of a growing market. We did our last update in 2018. We're recommended, recommend every four to six years. We're now would be at year five if we want to at this point. Page nine, real more detail. Last time the project was done, I think we all agreed that the commercial numbers were not done appropriately. And commercial is lower than it should be. And what is that doing? It's lower than residential. Okay?
Now, can I stop you there?
Sure.
And I'm gonna put you on the spot, because we talked about this, you and I, about the commercial, and I had asked you if it was an opportunity, if we had an opportunity to do a reeval on the commercial properties.
Yes.
And can you just summarize for everybody what you told?
When you lose that 100%, you cannot handpick what you want to update. So you can't say, well, we're gonna do commercial old. We want to do the portion of the city south of Fletcher, or whatever it may be. So you can't just do it that way. You have to do the entire city. Now, that does add a little bit of cost, which we'll talk about a little bit, but our commercial numbers, particularly our multifamily commercial, our apartments, our four units, our eight units, our multi-tenants, are incredibly under-valued. Incredibly under-valued. What does that do? That shifts the burden to the residential. I'm not gonna get into the detail, but one of the handouts I have that's in there is this trend analysis. Kind of looks like this, and it's in one of the back eighty. And basically, what it's saying to us, if you remember, our equalization rate is .86. Based on the current trends, our residential numbers, I know there's a lot of numbers here, but it's just that it's only dropping into the seventies. Maybe we get 80, but it's gonna be a significant drop, which results in a lot of those things. But we can talk about this in more detail later. We don't want to be too present-based here. Well, case ten, into the budgets and taxes. I know I've talked about this, but one of the biggest pushbacks we always get is reval rates tax. They don't raise taxes. They distribute the levy. Some people do pay more, some people pay similar, some people pay less. We did our project in 2017 in the town of Amherst. If your assessment increased about 19% or less, your tax bill didn't change or could be less. Now, some people went up, let's say, the assessment was 200. Guy that went to 220, he was paying less on taxes. Guy went to 240, on a 20% increase, his number was pretty equal. Now, the guy that went to 260, and we had some of those, they paid more, but it's fairly distributing the levy based on market. So we did that a lot. Page 11, there's a handout that I gave you, and everybody thinks this is boo math, right? But there's a handout that's a little more detailed, and it goes through how levies and how assessments and everything. You could lower assessments, but the tax levy could increase, and people are paying more in taxes. It's part of our theory of not to worry about taxes when you're going up. Worry about, do we have the right in our good debt? So what is a reassessment on page 12? It's a thorough review of the entire city, every property from vacant land to residential to commercial properties. We review every property. We take a look at them. We do comparable sales analysis for residential properties. We do the income analysis for commercial properties, and we try to develop what we feel is a fair value. Why are they necessary? Page 13, markets constantly changing. Right now, it's a very strong market, right? It, I expected to temper a little bit, and I think waiting a year or two probably was a good decision on the council's part. But if you're not doing that, you're not adjusting. Ranches are growing faster than cakes. Apartments are growing faster than retail. With an equalization rate, you're saying everything's eating, and you're not. So that thorough analysis you need to do every four to five years. We go through, we look at inventory of the products. Is it minor siding? Do they have a garage? Do they have a floor? Is it a commercial property that's office space, retail space, whatever? All those things is a thorough analysis that we and our contractors will do. Page 14 gets into it a little more in detail, we value property, but the important thing is we communicate. We will have, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about our public relations plan, we communicate to the public. We attend the school board meetings. We'll attend some city, we'll certainly do presentations here with updates. We will do things on the website. The last time we did, the contractor recommending, we'll do a great job with videos on the website that the public can view, that talk about what we do. Communication is the key with the public, and that is just as important as field work, what we do to establish values. You know, how is market value determined? I don't make it up. The market is. The market is what we look at. We look at what are things selling for? What are rents for commercial properties? We analyze it, we make decisions. Page 16 gives us a little detail here that I want to talk to you about. And what it is, is what we like to do is secure council approval. We did an RFP process already. In your handout, in, in the package I gave you, there's a little thing that looks like this, and it'll show GARRA on the front page and EMP. And what it is, it's the appraisal bed or the, the RFPs that were submitted by both contractors. GARRA and appraisal EMP were the two leading contractors who do this type of work here, who we did a full RFP with last year, did give us values for doing a project this year or next. The GARRA value came in at $115,000, the EMP value came in at $125,000. Now, GARRA gave us a price for a 23 project. EMP only gave us a price for the 22 project. Could be more, all right? My personal experience, and I think based on submissions we've had, is I would recommend that if we are going to do it, we go with GARRA. Now, there are, in addition to that, costs of $115,000, the need to budget some additional funding to cover overtime in apartments, some mailing costs, and what have you. I have the full RFPs, if you want to look at them from last year. I only kind of took out the pages that are referencing their cost. The way it would be paid for is part of it would be paid for in 2022, part of it would be paid for in 2023. That's why I'm coming to you tonight, is getting into the budget process to, to determine how we would, we would value it. Um, I can get you a lot more detail if you want to actually see the RFPs. I have them. But that's my recommendation, that if we were going to do it, that we would go with the GARRA firm to get it done. Seventeen gets into kind of the scheduling, and I would like you to follow. If we are going to do something, I look to award contracts by September of 21. The modeling analysis, sales verification done by the contractor would start in February of '22 through June of '22. Field review of values would be done from July of '22 through December of '22. Finalized values by January 31st of '23. We would mail preliminary notices to our taxpayers on February 27th of '23. Informal hearings, where the taxpayers have a right to come in and challenge their numbers, will be done from March and April of '23. The roll would go ten in on May 1st of '23. Then we have round two of challenges, where we'd have the formal grievance day, which would be the fourth Wednesday in May of '23. Before we hear people who maybe didn't go in formal or went in formal and didn't like their decision, they would then go before the accessory. Now, the last little bullet point there on page 18. New York State aid may be available. My guess is the problem will be in the 12 to $18,000 range. We're spending 145,000, maybe we get about 12, 18. That's the, one of the biggest issues, guys. The state used to fund you almost 75, 80% that fortunately ends up about 80 years. Nineteen and twenty get into the public relations kickoff. I'm not gonna go through it in detail, but you can see where we were doing, because education and communication with our residents is key to make them aware of what we're doing. And so you can see all that on page nineteen and twenty, and that'll be a combination of Twitter and webpages and video things and live meetings like this with our residents and their awareness. And I'm just gonna give you some personal thoughts, you know, page 21 is into. No one likes paying taxes. You know, bottom line is no one likes paying taxes. But paying taxes is a vital part of what allows government to provide the services that our residents want, whether it be education, parks, police, fire, recreation, what you have. Our goal is to try to make sure that the taxes people pay are based on the market value of their products. Frequent reassessments allows you to do that. We tell people, don't be fearful. It's, it's, it's nothing to do with how much tax you pay. It has to do to make sure you're paying your fair share. You know, our goal is to treat everyone fair. We give everybody an opportunity to understand what we're doing and do what we're doing. You know, what I'm asking the, the council tonight is, obviously, you have information. I'll certainly answer any questions. What I would request, and if it's possible, if we're going to move forward on this, that we kind of finalize it by mid to late August, so we can do what we can do. So I gave you a bunch of stuff, a lot of follow-up. And I guess what I'd like to know now is are there any questions?
A couple of questions. One, you talked about the, a lot of the rental properties and businesses and stuff like that, that part of it. One, do you think there's, you probably would see more value to those coming around? And two, there's been a lot of development over the past couple of years since 2018. So, I mean, is it fair to say there's a lot of things that aren't on the tax, taxable or not on there?
No, I just.
At the correct amount?
I think everything's on, you know, part of our process every year, we, as Eric gets permits, we get copies of them, and part of our job, myself and Cheryl, is to go out and look at the permits, see what's been done, and determine. So I, I think our inventory is on, but I'll give you a classic case. The model I have to use for apartments is the model that was done in 18. It's way under-valued.
Right.
By law, I can't value these new properties with a different model, where I'd be doing what's called selective assessment. So a lot of the new things we're putting on, like 72 East Niagara, like Delaware, and what have you, they're going on at a lower number than I think they should.
Because they're compared to a piece of property that was already under-valued.
Yeah, because what happens is it's unfair as an assessor, if you say, well, everybody's valued at $40 a square foot, but I think that's wrong, so the new ones I'm gonna put at 60. We're done up in court, so I gotta use the 40, you know?
You already got the template.
Yeah, so.
And in your opinion, too, the, um, the, um, the market is, is going, I mean, it's, it's been skyrocketing. Um, I, I think you made a point that, you know, kind of waiting a little bit for it to level out. I mean, by 2023, do you see trends heading that way or not, not willing to make a guess at this point?
Well, I think, you know, there's two, there's two big things driving your residential market. One certainly is lack, it's classic supply and demand. The lack of inventory makes the properties that go on the market sell at numbers that are really crazy, up to and including selling more than they're worth. Um, I think inventory is going to increase. I think it's possible that interest rates see a little bump that, you know, the price of money to get these models is going to drop a little. But to me, the driving factor is, is the inventory going to increase. Now, you see, a lot of people walk away from, you talk to some new home developers, they're actually seeing an increase in their own volume, because people are saying, I bid on 10 houses, I'm done. I'll build new, and maybe I'll pay a little more, but I'm gonna get my house. So I'm talking to some of the new builders, and I'm sure we're gonna see that being with David Holmes when they get started here. You know, people are gonna say, I'm done busy, you know, because I have a daughter that's looking. She's like 0 for 6. You know, and her father's an assessor, that's not good, you know, but, you know, the issue is you don't want to overpay, you know? You've been seeing this with some of the banks now. The banks are saying, you can pay 300, but we're gonna pay some mortgages at 250. But if you got property, if you've got a house, people have that extra equity, so that bigger than normal down payment is not an issue for people. But I do, sorry, I do expect the market to trend off a little bit. I really do. But, you know, we don't look at just one-year sales. When we look at our, our values, we look at a three to four-year period. So we try to incorporate the good and the bad, you know, but the market has been, really even over the last year or four years, it's been pretty strong, you know? I mean, I, I think, I don't know if I've been over here, but, I mean, the average home, when we did our last project, the average home in the city of Tonawana was selling for like 90 to 100. We're like, almost 140. You know, I mean, it's, 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 you know, good for people selling, bad for people buying.
Right.
And what happens in that, in that situation? So we go in, somebody, let's say they have just purchased a home for $200,000. They outbid somebody.
Yep.
It's really worth 160. So they're, they're on the, you know, they paid 200, and it comes in as an evaluation at 160. How does that affect that?
So that's where people, the buyers need to be, and we're gonna communicate that. It's a great question. We're gonna tell people, listen, if your bank appraised you at 160 and you, in the case you have that appraisal, and all I know is I see 200, right? So I'm gonna probably use 200 to kind of dictate my value. And we're gonna, it's one of the big things, we're gonna talk to the public with this market that, let us know, you know, we always hear, you know, everybody tells me to overpay. And, you know, I always laugh, it's like, when the first guy comes in and says, I underpaid, can you raise me? I'll be a little more conscious for overpaying. But some people do, you know? I just had a, a house nearby where I live, where mom and dad wanted to be near the grandkids. They paid like crazy for the house, you know? But we want to make sure that we're fair on that, and if you've got data to support it, let us know. So one of the downsides of a market like this is we can't, like, and if you're not doing a citywide update, all those properties that are selling like that, they still pay at the assessment that they're at, you know? So we, we will really push folks to, hey, if you bought it, we're gonna focus in on that sale price. But we will also look at, you know, the comps in the neighborhood. Now, even on a new sale, while that sale would be the number one comp, it's also for the comps. And very often, like, the number one comp may be 200, but if everybody else was 160, 170, it may cap at like 180. So we will adjust it down sometimes.
And that, does that affect their, does it put them into like a negative equity situation at all, or is?
You know, the assessment doesn't let their appraisal pass. You know, one of the downsides you have right now is if you're paying 200 and the bank thinks it's worth 150, the bank is mortgaging based on 150, so you're almost starting underwater.
Yeah.
Now, the average would be, well, the market's strong, and if I hold, if the market stayed at this kind of level, in two years, maybe it's worth 200. But on what the bank is valuing you at, yeah, you're almost underwater to, you know?
Just kind of, kind of thinking about, I think it was 2007 with that housing bubble that affected so many people. I, I know that this is, assessment probably won't affect that too much, but if we're heading that way, and this is a, another Lego piece in that puzzle.
Sure.
We could avoid that.
You know, we're, we're lucky here that the lenders, you know, they had huge issues in Arizona and Florida. Our lenders here tend to be fairly conservative. I mean, T and a lot of the people who are doing mortgages are not, you know, they're, they, they, even on commercial things, they tend to be conservative to avoid that, because as a banker, that's your biggest problem. You know, you don't want to have, you know, 100 million in mortgages and it's only worth 80, and then the bank has an issue. Here, we tend to be a little more conservative. Here, we tend to be a little more conservative than we saw in some of those other areas, you know?
Appreciate that.
No problem. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time, guys, everybody have a great evening.
Thanks to one in, uh, David. Are there any special revenue sharing agreements that could get affected if the city's only got builders built? Where a higher assessed value will actually need more revenue sharing. Uh, as opposed to why Tom on this, Tom, I was.
Not that I'm aware, but I, I want to say I'm actually. I mean, I'm not, not that I'm aware, you know? But, you know, there's, there's always the big area with sales tax. The sales tax allocation that the county does, I have no idea how they allocate the sales tax. Should be based on assessed value, but not as an obvious. I, I'll see, let me find an answer to those questions.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, let's go around the room. Mr. Newman. This one now.
So, that's all I really have, which is.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Ms. Cameron, Anna. Just wanted to let you guys know traffic and safety's meeting on Monday, so if you have any issues, please let me know.
I'd like to attend, what time is that?
Uh, six o'clock.
And in the community.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're going to talk about the Wheeler Street parking on both sides?
Uh, we can discuss that, yes.
In the last meeting, they were going to review it.
Yep. So we will talk about that. Um, the LDC is, uh, coming back, they've met a few times, you know, I think it's a great group of people that are, uh, coming up with some good ideas, so I look forward to seeing what they have to bring up to us. That's all I have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Cameron, Mr. Rowntree.
I don't have anything, um, I know you wanted to talk about the, um, the other thing with Jackie, Jackie James, but I'll save that for you, I don't want to hijack that.
Oh, no, you.
But I don't have anything up this week.
Uh, Mr. Mail.
Uh, nothing right now, just, uh, I'll wait till after the meeting.
Thank you for those in attendance that are here today. About the flooding, the current storm is missing us to the north and the east, so hopefully that trend will continue. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Um, so as Councilman Rowntree kind of segued in, um, just to follow up, I know we met with Jackie James Creedon from the Citizen Science Community Resource Organization. Um, and I know we had talked about kind of waiting until our budget to allocate some funds for the organization so that they can do soil testing, uh, for residents in our community. Um, the situation has changed and they needed a deadline from all the municipalities by July twenty seventh. Um, so I know the town of Tonawanda committed, um, Grand Island and us were evaluating it. Um, I wanted to see what everyone's take on it was, where we allocated five thousand dollars to the organization so that we can get those soil samples done for the residents. I did talk to Bill, we do have the funding, uh, we can work on, on getting that done. Um, if everybody's in agreement, we can have a, a resolution. So I just kind of wanted to get everybody's thoughts on that.
I think the the reward for the payout is it's a no brainer.
Right. And the mayor, and the mayor and I talked, um, we're waiting to hear, uh, the restrictions that federal government brings down to see if we could use some of that federal monies for this project. So more to come on that, but, um, if we can get a commitment out to Jackie James and, and the organization, I think that would be a win for us. Um, so, Mr. Clerk, if you just would pull the council that we're in agreement of allocating five thousand dollars from a budget line, we'll work with uh, the mayor and, and Bill to figure out what line, but allocating the five thousand dollars for the Citizen Science Community Resources.
Okay, this is for a commitment of five thousand dollars to the Citizen Science Resources. Uh, Newman.
Hi.
Cameron, Dana.
Hi.
Ron, Stroh.
Hi.
My own.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi. Um, Mr. Rowntree, I think you can just reach out to, um, Jean, the resident who reached out to you and just let her know, we will have a resolution progress there.
We'll do, I'll, also just to piggyback on that as well, is, it, it was my understanding as well that the money could be committed next year and the year, year following, so it wouldn't come out of this year's budget. It was over a two-year plan.
I did not read that.
I think we're committing it for a pay, payment in twenty twenty two, and then we can split that between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. And I, I, that was a discussion that we had with, um, with when she was here.
Okay.
Anybody else remembers that?
Okay, so it's for twenty twenty two.
Yes, for the first payment and then the following one. Splitting it up over two years.
I thought the commitment was due.
The commitment that we would be a part of it was due by July twenty seventh, is how I understood it, and that's somebody telling the other.
So we don't need to amend any budget lines for twenty twenty.
Exactly, I just wanted to point to that.
Okay, perfect, you just want to reach out to, or we can reach out to Jackie James just to make sure of that, but, um, oh, that's perfect, that's good to know, okay? And thanks for bringing that to our attention. All right. Um, I don't have anything else. Jason, do you want to come on up? So, um, I know, um, some residents had reached out to, um, a lot of council members about the weather event that we had uh, over the weekend, um, and I thank you for coming to the council meeting to kind of talk about um, the work that we've, we've done to our sewer system and kind of talk about that event. And I know there are some residents here that may have some questions. I just want to let everybody know that during this, um, period, we don't have, allow for public comments. However, um, if you have specific questions, I'm sure our engineer would be happy to answer those for you or you can direct those questions to us at the appropriate time and we'll get those answers to you.
Yeah, I can certainly.
Hang out in the back, whatever, yeah.
Um, yeah, as you guys know, we did, uh, significant playing throughout the city, uh, Saturday. It was really area-wide flooding, uh, for your, for your hammers, Tonawanda, the Tonawanda, Grand Island, kind more. The mayor has a rain gauge at his house, we go by an official rain gauge and we have over at the main pump station, just adjacent to City Hall here, and we measured four point three inches of rainfall. So just kind of put that in perspective, typical of July, we have about three point one inches of rain, uh, for the entire month. So we got about, you know, six weeks worth of rain in a matter of hours. Um, on top of that, what makes things a little bit worse, at least as it changed to really both surface flooding and uh, infiltration to sewers, is prior to that, if you kind of back up, prior to that Saturday, and you go back over about a eleven day period or so, um, again, different locations, the mayor's, it's more on the south end of the city, our gates are north end of the city. But we had an additional three inches of rainfall over that time, I know at your house you measured quite a bit more. Um, but what that does is, so if you think of all the rainfalls, when it's going to hit a parking lot, street, concrete, your roof, it's just going to run right out, right, and it's going to go into the street and, and potentially cause issues. Typically, when you've got just a normal rainfall out or, or when the, when the rain hits either a vegetated area like your lawn or something like that, the soil acts almost like a sponge, so it can absorb a lot of that water as well. But when you've got three to four inches of rain in the ten days prior, that sponge is full. So anything that hits, it's going to run off. And that's not to say that if we had just the four inch storm without the previous rainfall, we still would have issues because we were just way too much rain for us to handle. Um, so I know, I know what you guys were out and about during that time, but some of the things that, that we noticed, um, we saw two Mount Creek, uh, you see this, this banks that actually go over the top of our clutch for a period of time. Uh, the state ditch, which is a major drainage structure, it goes from Elka Creek all the way through the city and eventually the discharge is the Niagara River out here by City Hall. Um, that surcharged to the point where we were actually getting water bubbling out of some catch bases on Main Street. So there really was nowhere to, to put this water, it was just too much for us to handle. We can talk to the other side if you want, if you want to talk about the sewer system itself.
So, question. Our, our pump stations were working, they were operating, I know there was.
Yeah, we had, I checked up for the meeting here once I found out we were going to be doing something here. Uh, we pumped twenty six million gallons out of our main pump station over the last, over the two-day period, Saturday, Sunday. And again, I know those numbers don't be nice to get in context. So in those two days, we averaged around thirteen million gallons a day. Our normal dry weather flow, let's say we have a normal July, where it's very little bit of space substation and you've got, um, what we call dry weather flow. We have a long dry period and there's no rain, we get a base flow, that's basically just the amount of sewers that should be in the sewer. And what we usually pump to the town on days like that is somewhere around one and a half, two million gallons. So anything beyond that one and a half, two million gallon base, that's part of it's getting into the sewer that shouldn't be there. Whether through infiltration, coming in through cracks, leaky joints and things like that, or direct connection. So as you guys are aware, we're in, uh, phase nine of a, a long-term program to address infiltration and inflow within the city sources. I want to make something really clear before we go any further. Um, because we're going to talk about that and we're going to talk about flooding that occurs due to influence infiltration. When you get four point three inches of rain and you've got water flowing over the streets, it's kind of getting manhole covers, it's mining sewers isn't going to stop that, you're still going to have issues due to these big, big events. But what it does is it stops running basin backups and things like that, and you've got, you know, an inch and a half of rain or two inches of rain. So basically what happens is when you, when you get all this rain, you, your groundwater, it increases level on the outside of your house. Um, and again, like I said, it'll come into through cracks and pipes, pipe joints, through foundation drains and, and things like that. So what we do, City of Tonawanda owns the main line sewer, that's the sewer that runs down the middle of the street that collects everything. The manholes that are associated with that are also owned and operated by the city. The laterals, and that would be the pipe that goes in, the pipe in the middle of the road to your house, that's privately owned in the City of Tonawanda. So I do have a video on, Sean, of course, I don't know if we're going to be able to do much with it today, I thought we were going to be back there, but I, I picked particular the town, except for there might be some residents of town here. So we've got video on here after we did our lining, and Tom actually was in my office after I spoke with you. Uh, and I was playing one of the videos, and you can see what our sewers look like now. So prior to the lining, we had play sewers, just like you have play laterals, joints like everything, you can just line your crack. After the lining project, there are one solid piece of fiberglass that goes from manhole to manhole. There's no cracks in it, there are no joints. The only way water can come in is through the holes that we cut to tie the laterals in, you still have to make penetration so that um, sewage in your house can get into the main, that's still there. And as you saw, there's clear water flowing in and from those private sources into the main line sewer. You don't see coming through any other location, those are the only penetrations in our sewer. And I know that the city was designed as a combined system, you guys remember combined or separated sewers? Combined holes, both storm and sanitary, that was originally how the city was designed. So when you've got a building or a house, whatever, with a foundation drain, a foundation drain is a pipe that's designed to collect groundwater at the, at the foundation of your house. To run hydrostatic force lifting up or pushing it out in your basement. It's designed to take that water and send it somewhere, in a combined system, you only have one sewer pipe. So it goes out your lateral to that sewer. While when you separate, when you separate it, back in the seventies, we added a storm sewer. So that separate pipe, I'm sorry, we had sanitary most cases. That lateral from your house now has tied to the sanitary sewer. And unless you've had a sun pump installed, those foundation drains are still tied directly into the sanitary sewer. So that's another potential location where we can get water into the sanitary system. And again, just to be clear, four point three inches of rain, none of this really matters. It's way too big for a storm sewer. But it's, it sounds confusing and unfortunately, maybe if you go over this, and even if, you know, there's anybody here who said that, I'm looking at your house. Yeah, we can like, we can like go down and, uh, I can post it on the computer and show you the videos. It just makes it a lot easier to understand what I'm saying, that you can actually see the sewer pipe itself. You know, we, we looked at some of them where, um, because it was a dry day and it has to be a dry day when they TV, unfortunately. Because if you get too much flow in, the, the water will cover the camera, you can't see what you need to see. So, but even on those dry days, we saw clear water coming into the resident's side. Um, you also look up some of the pipes and you'll see gross disalignment. Where you've got a pipe here and the next pipe that goes into it down here, there's like a literal one inch gap that just opened there. Now the groundwater gets high, it's flowing in through those gaps. So that's kind of where we wrap that. Anybody else have questions?
Questions?
Fortunately, well, it burst all of us, it's been, uh, three years of this stuff, so it's not new to me. That's the scary thing, it, it was, it's not like we aren't getting these big storms. You know, it's happening and it's happening more often, I don't know why. Exactly, it's happening more often, yep. And it's, you know, we can go through, we, every, every, uh, day, actually, except for Saturdays, I'm basically redating or reporting the flow, our rain, our rain, uh, information, so we know when the rain is falling. And you can go back through years of data and you don't see a storm this big. So we start to see bigger, bigger ones happening.
Jason, you said we're in phase nine. Um, what area of the city is that?
So, phase nine is wrapping up, we're pretty much done with that, they've just got to do some wrap up.
Okay.
Phase ten is what's being in the design phase right now, that's more like city center area. So like the CDBG projects, that's to develop the block grants, we break out portions of the, of the space project, because there's a grant opportunity with the county. Um, you'll see, actually, they are out there today, they're doing some CCTV work at Robin, or, uh, so that works happening in advance of the, uh, base network.
Thank you.
How long does it take to, I, I don't know if you even know the answer to this, but to clear that amount of water from the system? So in the event that, knock on wood, tonight during, say, there's more rain coming, that
Yeah, I, I.
Is that, is that also an issue of the volume being able to be cleared quick enough?
It is, um, that would probably be a question better directed to, uh, the station operators, but I can tell you, again, I, I, I mentioned that I was over at the main pump station today, getting rain, redated. Um, even today, right now, as of four o'clock this afternoon or whatever it was, we were pumping about four and a half million gallons. So we're still off system wide, so that, that groundwater hasn't completely subsided, takes a really long time to burn out.
Even at my house, live up on Geth Terrace, I mean,
Yeah.
walked out in the backyard today and it's still, I, I don't like to call it my excessive weight, but when I was walking on it, the water was coming up through my toes.
The ground is super saturated, and I, I don't know if you've
Fair enough, fair enough.
I think, I don't know if you're, um, that the house on Luxon, I know some of your relatives lives there, if he installed a sun pump or not, but I, I used to live on Gillette, and, um, obviously when, you know, some kind has to be installed first at the house. And that sun, sun pump ran like nonstop, it's a very wet area, the city of Tonawanda is the same way, especially if you get down, uh, towards Ives. And, uh, just kind of, if, if anybody lives in a house where sun pump runs quite a bit, just kind of put in perspective the amount of water that you're, you're pushing out. A one-third horsepower pump, you know, that, that puts out about twenty five hundred, uh, gallons per hour of water. So now imagine a house that doesn't have a sun pump at all, that's twenty, each house that doesn't have a sun pump is putting somewhere around twenty five hundred to three thousand gallons per hour of groundwater into a pipe that shouldn't be handling it. And that's before you get to laterals that, let's face it, when they came through and they built, they built the city system and they built the laterals connecting the house. These are seventy, eighty little pipes that we all own, that go in our own houses, myself included. And I guarantee you, based on the shape of the pipe that we've seen it fixed, that the house, the pipe to your house is no better than this. And in a lot of cases, it's worse because of the trees, and tree roots love to get into sanitary sewers and pop joints and exploit cracks and make them bigger. So, yeah. That's, that's kind of where we're at with this. There's still a few houses that still have their gutter receivers still connected to the sanitary as well on some pieces. Yeah, I didn't want, I don't want to get into super specifics on that, but we did, we do do dye testing along with this. And, uh, you know, I've got the report on campus where we've got multiple houses where dye ended up in the sanitary sewer, we tested the gutters. So there are specific addresses on campus that rain hits your roof and it goes down through your gutter system, it's getting into the sanitary sewer where it shouldn't be.
And is there anything we can do to have them change it or enforce the, uh, the code?
Yes, I know, and I'll, this is an issue that came up very early in this program, so we've been doing this since the first days.
Sure.
And what we kind of elected to do or how to follow up on it was, even if we were seeing dye in the sanitary sewer, if you had a bubbler in, which indicated it was put in by a plumber, you did the right thing, you hired a plumber, tied your, your uh, drains into the system properly. We didn't go after you. We didn't go after you, even though we know that that water's going towards the drain pile, going through the drain pile, just going underneath and finding the cracks in your lateral. Your lateral is shot or, you know, very leaky. Reason we aren't making them replace the lateral is because, let's say Dave lives next door to you and he has splash blocks at his house. His lateral can be just as bad shaped as yours is. But we're not even testing this because we know that his root drains is black rock and don't go into the sanitary sewer. Now, if we see one where there's like a direct connection, there's a ton of flow through, then yeah, we may take it out. But if we think it's more of an indirect action due to the condition of the sanitary lateral, we haven't acted on that.
To an extent, the sun pump or the bubbler alleviates some of the problem as well.
Yeah, sound good, yep.
And just another question too.
Should we talk? The other issue, just to, just to kind of interrupt real quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Because of where the sanitary, sorry, where the sun pump has to be located to intercept those foundation drains, typically in the same location where the pipe, the lateral from your house that goes to the main is, they're very, very close to each other. So I'll call myself out on this. I, I am not tied directly into the under, my sun pump discharge is out of my front yard and this kind of, you know, settles in. I've got enough where it's not going with the sidewalk or whatever. But anybody who's got a system like that, if your lateral has cracks and you're sending water directly over that lateral, it's going to the ground. If those of your lateral, the cracks aren't, go to the sanitary sewer. So it's a complicated issue because it's a privately owned pipe, the lateral. And it's not cheap to fix.
Yeah.
But we know that's, they aren't in good condition. We physically can see them. And then I'd love to be able to do lateral inspections and get you, you know, get a camera, worry about the lateral itself, because I think it'd open a lot of people's eyes. People that have, I'm sure you know, people that have, it's called plumber to get the roots out of their lateral. Whether it's every year, every other year, every third year, well, those roots opened up gaps in that clay pipe. It's just clay tile. That's all we're talking about. So water's getting in through there.
When you talk about the, the main sewer line, you know, the work that's going into that. One, I mean, it's being done. It's, it's, we're mandated to do that by the state, but we're also meeting specific guidelines and specific amount, able to handle specific amounts of flow as well. So I mean, that's, what we're handling is what we expect to handle, what's, there's a precedence for. And we see it in, in neighboring communities too. I mean, I remember I was out of town this weekend, but I saw it all over Facebook and community pages. Sheridan Drive, Grand Island, like friends of mine that had, had issues in surrounding cities. So it's not, not a City of Tonawana centric issue. I mean, this is something that, with these storms that are coming and coming more frequently, everybody's dealing with it in different communities as well.
Yeah, common problem in older cities.
Right.
No, if it was a, a newer city, something that kind of exploded in the eighties or newer, you'd have plastic, like or PVC. Your joints would be located even on the laterals, be located, you know, 20 foot, 15, 20 foot lay lines instead of every three feet.
Any other questions?
I think it was a good explanation.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Now, Jason, I know some residents are here that may rather see you than, than us, understandably so. So if you want, you can use the caucus room or whatever you're comfortable with and any residents, if you have any questions, Jason's happy to answer them. And that's how you clear out a room, I guess. All right. So let's, uh, let's take a few minutes before we come back on the floor.
Madam President, I'm going to pause the recording at this time.
Thank you so much.
Start bringing everyone back into the meeting from waiting room.
Calling Mr. Newman. Mr. Newman, Tom. Is he in that?
He's in the back room.
In the back.
Want to go back and tackle?
And Sean, do you want to?
Sergeant in arms.
Yeah. We did appoint Linus. Jim, hang on one second. We.
Sure.
Probably exited station. Nope, there he is.
He says here, we need to go.
I was going to tell the mayor, we have to update the clock here. All right, we're ready, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, 7:02. Everyone from the waiting room has been brought back into the virtual meeting, so we're all set on this end.
All right. Let's call the meeting of the City of Tonawana Council to order. Can you please call the roll?
Newman.
Here.
Cameron Danner.
Here.
Rowden Strow.
Here.
Mylum.
Here.
Cook.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Oh, Lord, our God, bless the leaders of our land, that we might be people of integrity and peace, as well as a blessing to other nations of the earth. Lord, keep our nation under your protective care. To all who have executive authority and to all who administrative authority, grant wisdom and grace in the exercise of your duties. Give grace to your servants, oh Lord. To those who make laws, give courage, wisdom and foresight to provide for the needs of all our, our people. Having been so wonderfully blessed, help us share our abundance as we fill our duty to our sister nations around the world. To the judges and officers of the courts, give understanding and integrity that human rights may be protected and justice served. Give grace to your servants, oh Lord. Finally, oh Lord, teach all of us to rely on your strength and to accept our responsibilities to our fellow citizens that we might elect trustworthy leaders to serve your people throughout our nation and the world. Help them to make wise decisions that in our city and everywhere, the well-being of all may be achieved. May we serve you faithfully in this generation and in the generations to come, to honor your holy name for yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Amen. May be seated. Hey. Bit openings, as for our agenda. Communications from city officials and correspondents have been ordered and filed. We are not going into executive session. At this time, we'll take comments by the public on the resolutions. Anyone that just wishing to address the council on the resolutions that are here with us can come forward. Those joining us virtually, there is a spot where you can raise your hand and then the clerk will call upon you. Mr. Clerk, anyone who's joining us virtually wish to address the council on the resolutions?
Madam President, at this time, I do not show anyone in, in the virtual meeting that wants to make any comments on the resolutions.
Okay, and hearing none, let's roll.
Just sharing the screen with those virtually, so they have the agenda in front of them.
Thank you so much.
Okay, resolution one by the council, second by the council. Resolved that the council minutes from July 6, 2021 be accepted as filed.
Um, comments or questions?
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye, declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution two by council member Mylum.
Mr. Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to waive readings of resolutions two through 11.
I have a motion by the council president to waive the readings of resolutions two through 11. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Mylum. Please call the roll. Sorry.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum. Cook.
Aye, declare waiving the readings adopted.
Okay, resolution two by council member Mylum.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Newman. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number three by council member Mylum.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Cameron Danner. Comments or questions? Comment, this resolution is for a special event that's happening on July 31st at, along the Riverwalk. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number four by council member Rowden Strow.
Do we have a second?
I'll take a minute, President.
Seconded by Mr. Mylum. Comments or questions? Comments, comment, this is for a special event that's happening at the band show on Sunday, September 26th. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number five by the council, second by the council.
Comments or questions? Comment, what this does, it updates our ordinance relative to alcoholic beverages at the pub. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number six by the council, second by the council.
Comments or questions? Comment, this updates our ordinance relative to panhandling. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number seven by council member Rowden Strow.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it, Madam President.
Seconded by Ms. Cameron Danner. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number eight by council member Rowden Strow.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, Madam President.
Seconded by Mr. Newman. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number nine by council member, or by, I'm sorry, resolution number nine by council member Cameron Danner.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rowden Strow. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number 10 by council member Cameron Danner.
Do we have a second?
I'll take a minute, President.
Seconded by Mr. Mylum. Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
My, Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted.
Resolution number 11 by, by the council, second by the council.
Comments or questions? Comment, I actually want to turn this over to the mayor just to update on this resolution. I think this is exciting for the city and we look forward to hopefully getting awarded this grant. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Just to give everyone an update. It's been about four years since we updated our local waterfront revitalization plan. And out of the numerous public hearings, charrettes that we had, we even had an online survey posted on social media and our website. There were some projects that the public really wanted to see move forward. One of them was, we're calling it the Historic Erie Barge Canal Overlook Improvement Project, which sounds like a mouthful. But it's behind the homes on River Ridge here where the canal meets the river. And we felt like it would be, it's an underutilized area. And the public thought it would be a great location to have a kayak launch and an overlook to take advantage of the vista view. So I want to thank everybody that was involved in the LWRP process, the people that, that voted on and submitted projects. And look forward to starting this project hopefully at some point next year. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments? Please call the roll.
Newman.
Aye.
Cameron Danner.
Aye.
Rowden Strow.
Aye.
Mylum.
Aye.
Cook.
I declare the resolution adopted. All right, at this time, we'll now take comment, comments by the public following the resolutions. For those that wish to make a comment virtually or ask a question, there's a raise your hand feature. Please do so. Any resident wishing to address the council can do so at this time. Mr. Clerk, I have a resident wishing to address the council. So you can come right up to the mic. Just need your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Kent, and I reside at 213 Kent Street. This past weekend, the City of Tonawana sewer backed up into my basement for the third time in two years. Due to the severity of the most recent backup on Saturday, the 17th. My fully furnished basement sustained an accumulation of two feet of City of Tonawana sewage. I contacted the City of Tonawana Fire Department twice on Saturday, 3:00 PM and again 3:30. It indicated directly through the dispatcher, the continuous rising level of water has ultimately reached a point where the electrical plug outlets in my walls were completely submerged underwater. I did not receive a knock from the fire department until seven hours later at 10:00 PM. Obviously, at that point, the damage is already done. I had no ability to enter my basement at that point to continue my efforts to remove the water manually as I would be placing myself in danger due to potential electrocution. I had no choice but to sit back and helplessly watch my property be destroyed in front of my house. Prior to last Saturday, I did my job as a resident. Two years ago, I'm meeting the F R another flooding, I installed a brand new sewer line from my home to the street to avoid any recurring problems in the future. You can find the permits. To be extra cautious, I had my front tree removed at my expense to prevent potential root damage to the new sewer line that I installed to avoid a flood. These steps that I took to prevent a disaster cost me $10,000 in prevention. And the price to do my due diligence as a taxpayer and a resident, my responsibilities was $10,000 and in the end, it was for nothing. My entire basement is now destroyed beyond repair due to the severe accumulations of two feet of City of Tonawana. My entire basement is now destroyed beyond repair. Due to the severe accumulations of two feet of City of Tonawanda sewage water. My furnace, which is three years old, my hot water tank, which is 10, must be replaced. My lawn is submerged. I can't run it. It doesn't work. And obviously now my AC doesn't work because I need a furnace and it's 90 degrees and I have a risk of mold. My furnace lost 6,000, my water tank 700, my air filtration is 2,000. That's $9,000 of damage in five square feet of space in my basement. I had to remove all of my affected drywall to prevent hazardous mold formation. I have lost all my personal belongings in my basement. My home is a ranch. That is 1,100 square feet of property loss. A person who has a neurological condition such as I also lost all my therapeutic equipment as well. I cannot begin to articulate the physical toll this cleanup was taking on my body personally. The mental stress was put upon me and my family. This is but a catastrophe to my family through no fault of my home. But rather from the lack of the city in doing its part in maintaining and updating its sewer system. How many instances like this does the city need to witness until it finally takes its duty to act seriously and remedy the antiquated system? How can the city justify its recent sewer building increases without putting that revenue into such a project? The financial cost to my family's personal catastrophe is nearing $30,000. In loss of clients, structural damage, personal property and cleanup. I did my due diligence as a taxpayer to prevent this from happening in my home in the City of Tonawanda. What is the city going to do for me? One flood happens, two becomes a nuisance. But three floods in two years shows a dramatic pattern of evidence of a major issue and a clear failure on the city's part to correct it. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, we have a, a comment from our, our, from a resident here. So you can come up. Just need your name and address.
I've been there for about six years now. And every year. Except the first one.
I'm sorry, Madam President. I didn't get the gentleman's name and address, please.
Hang on one second. Um, our, our city clerk just needs your name and address for the record.
I'm Mr. Hopkins. 246 Hampton Street.
Did you get that, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you.
And the same problem has been going on in the street. Most of you will recognize was my neighbor across the street, he's been there for 30 years, he's had the same problem for 30 years. It's getting worse because the climate changes, most of the water, it came in this time was far more than before. But even before, the basement got flooded. My basement luckily was only flooded with rainwater, rainwater. This lady's, my neighbor, got sewer water also. Nothing has been done for over 30 years. Now, I asked the town engineer, the city, the city engineer, what he would recommend. He said he would look at it and recommend to you and the council about what to do. I would recognize money is tight. What we do, what we do need is something to mitigate this problem. Having nothing done for those years, long before I even got here, is just hurt. Something has to be done. These people in the street, they're not welcome. And every time like that gentleman just said, $30,000 of damage. Guys, we got this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. Any other comments?
We've got to know that 311. So, last Saturday, we had that torrential rain. Stormsters couldn't keep up. The streets were flooding. So the water from stormsters were diverted to sanitary sewers and water backed up in what, sewage water into our homes. There's nothing sanitary about that. Some got a little, some got, wow. I got 15 inches. This is the second time that my basement's flooded severely since I purchased this home in 2014. It's flooded three other times, but just a little bit. And the losses weren't near as devastating as what we've got now. My furnace. I found out today my furnace has been costing over $8,000. That doesn't include the air conditioner, which my health condition requires. I can't take heat anymore. My hot water system, yes, is ruined. Washer and dryer. Finished walls in the basement. And I moved them up after the last severe flood. But my brand new walls were all lost too. Not to mention cleanup mitigation costs. The entire basement must be treated with anti-miccurial wash. My homeowner's insurance scored a case, some of it, but not near enough. This is a devastating loss to my family. With COVID coming on too, my children moved back home. And their apartments were ruined by these. They lost everything. My family's not alone being affected by this. Flooding at the dead end of Hampton Street. I brought some photos posted on Tonawanda's Facebook page. There was over a two foot of water in the dead end of Hampton Street. This wasn't from a stormstorm though. That was caused by the overflow, the drainage ditch running along the bike path from Town, Tonawanda. Something is definitely not to be dealt with that. Flooding of Hampton Street towards Delaware, but many residents, residents are at risk. The roads were flooded, they were closed, they couldn't get to their homes. Our world is changing. We have to watch what's happening, not only in our community, but our country. Severe weather is causing unprecedented levels of flooding all over the country. Germany right now, people are dying. In a highly developed country, it's flooding that they weren't prepared for. Okay, so, you know, we pay our taxes when we expect some basic infrastructure, including proper sewers that don't back up into our homes, but are in our families at risk. Okay, I cannot currently live in the house until the mitigation is complete. We don't care about Republican or Democrat. We care about safety and community and helping with families. So I hope that we'll be able to work together to get something done about this to protect our future, working for the president.
Thank you, Ms. Nomack. Any other questions?
Right, Sue Fix, 242 Hampton Street. Um, all may have gotten an email from me. Um, I know I've spoken to most of you. Um, you know, we bought our house last year, May of 2020. We got flooded three weeks later. DPW came out, fixed a drain out front that was in need of desperate repair. According to all of our neighbors, it was that way for over a decade. DPW said, if it happens again, we got a pump out on close to the street, not a problem. We got ways to handle it. This past Saturday, we didn't see that. The whole storm was tearing in. We started calling the non-emergency line around 9:00 AM. It took until three, then over a dozen calls later to get the road closed. Only because I called in favors with relatives at the fire department and Councilman Tom Newman. This is how we got the road closed at one end, not the other. The whole time, I should have been in the basement cleaning up and protecting my basement and protecting my property instead of seeing what's out there. This was a predictive storm. It was on the Tonawanda Facebook page. It was on every news channel. Every outlet I gave was overwhelmed. DPW staff was lacking in knowledge. I spoke with most of them. They did come out in a timely fashion at first, but it took them 45 minutes and a different pump to make it to start working. My neighbor, Tom, who just spoke. He's a retired engineer. He watched him incorrectly try to set these pumps up and fail each time until it didn't work. It's not my job to continuously have to call the non-emergency line when there are potential emergencies in the city. I shouldn't have to call over and over and over and wait 30, 45 minutes for resolutions. I did. I asked DPW to close the street. Not my job. Talked to a couple of police officers who showed up. They called their boss. They told the DPW to close the street. Did not, again, had to call the favors of the fire department and councilman Tom to let me get that done. In meantime, people are flying down our street, making our basements and yards worse. I watched a kid fly down the street in a hydroplane, two inches from hitting my brand new car. Tell me how easy it is to get a new car right now. It's not. My car was eight feet into my driveway. We found out the city has cameras, which we did find out today. Again, they did. They did do some assessments. I definitely almost spent some time looking at those videos. But again, talking to my neighbors, this has happened year after year after year. I get four inches of rain from President and type of storm. But it's not the first time it's happened in our neighborhood. We need to be prepared. We need to come up with a plan to help everybody. Simple thing of getting roads closed. My dad retired from the DOT after 40 years. They closed roads before because they knew, like example, somebody said Sheraton Drive earlier. That always floods, they close it ahead of time. They know a storm's coming, they close it. Tonawanda posted roads closed, North Tonawanda posted roads closed, ten more, Amherst. We just asked each department, not say it's so-and-so's job and they can't do it. Can't we all work together? We all should be a team in the city. Fire, police, DPW, council members, mayor, citizens, all work together. Our entire neighborhood worked together during the span. We all helped each other out. We helped clean out each other's basements. We helped each other in the roads. We did what we could. It did start with sanitation backup, but once the sewage came, it affected pretty much everybody on the block. I did call my insurance company and I'm waiting to see how much it's going to cost. It only covers $10,000 in damage. I'm not a fan of this gentleman. I do have to have my dryer replaced, everything. But I'll tell you, after last year, I had to add a second sump pump. I have two sump pumps and a bubbler system. They all worked. Mine worked. The city's on fail. Um, Mr. Mayor, you did reach out to me on email and I appreciate that. I do look forward to seeing you tomorrow at the house. Anybody else who would like to come, 6:00 PM, 242, 2 Hampton Street. Check out the street and see what's going on. All right, Jenna, thank you for the call earlier. Tom, thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Mrs. Fix. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Clerk, any residents wishing to address the council virtually?
Madam President, I do not show anyone from the virtual call willing to make any comments on.
All right, Mr. Mylum.
Wasn't expecting that. Thank you. Um. I appreciate what everybody has said here and taking many notes as I could write quickly as I could. Um, I think it bears empathy. I, I can't imagine what you're going through. I was telling the other council members, the first day my house was mine. I stepped into the basement and it was eight inches of water, so, um, I know exactly. It's just such a helpless, helpless feeling. And, uh, I'm very sorry for what you guys have done. I certainly appreciate the teamwork aspect. I, I know, uh, Councilman Newman asked for the department heads to come tonight. They had previous engagements and couldn't make it. But I think, um, going forward, there should be a little bit more communication between the departments so that this stuff doesn't happen. I think it also might bearing, bear taking into account, uh, maybe looking at switching a phase or maybe changing, um, where we're doing the next sewer work to go to this area instead of areas that don't have the problems yet. So all that stuff, I mean, I think we should get together and speak about it. But thank you for coming.
Even listen?
What was that? Oh, was that me? I didn't know who said that. Um, but thank you for coming and, um, you know, the, the only thing I can offer right now is my empathy. Before you might, my grandmother had to put a water in her basement. I just, she lives on Linwood and just talking to her on my way in tonight. They told her, she's a, she's very old. Um, and they told her it could be up to 28 days before anybody comes out from, um, Surf Row to, to even look at it. She's 100. So she lost her furnace and everything as well, AC. But there, I definitely think we should and will look into this. So thank you for coming. I know it's not, it's not easy to come up and speak in front of everybody, especially when, while I've certainly gone through, uh, for lack of a better word, trauma. And, um, the, that is not going to go away quickly. But so thank you for coming and I look forward to working with you guys. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mylum. Mr. Rowan Stroh.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I can't add any more to Dave. Um, my sentiments are the same. I've, I've, I've said it to your situation as well. Thanks for speaking to it and I, I agree a hundred percent to, uh, you know, work together to see what we can do to alleviate the situation. Um, I, I did want to add to, uh, thank the council members for, um, dedicating the money for the, uh, CSCR. Um, I think that's, uh, going to benefit our community in the long run. Um, people can be a part of this. It's going to have some intangible, intangible value above and beyond the money that we're going to be matching for this. Um, so thank you all for being a part of this and I look forward to that. We'll look forward.
Mr. Rowan Stroh, if you could just speak up so the residents in the gallery can hear you.
Sure, sorry. Um, it, just to repeat, I just wanted to say thank you to the rest of the council, uh, for committing to, uh, the matching part of the grants for the CES, the CSCR. I just feel it, uh, in the long run will benefit our community. Um, we'll see a lot more return on that money in a way it'll help for remediation and testing in our area for any issues having to do with Tonawanda code. That's really all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan Stroh. Ms. Cameron Diner?
Thank you, Madam President. I too, my heart aches for you people. You know, we all own homes in the city. We've all had water. You've done your due diligence to somewhat remedy the problem. So it's our job now to move forward. And we will work together to figure out what is the best for you guys. Okay, I am so sorry that you had to do with that on Saturday on top of all the rain. You know, but please, our guys, they work hard. Our DPW, our police, our fire, they were out there. They were inundated as well, just like you guys were. So, give them a little compassion too. And again, you know, I will definitely come over tomorrow night, take a look at the damage myself. Okay, but we will get to the bottom of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cameron Diner. Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, this was a, a painful day for a lot of people. All of Western New York was in problems this, this weekend. Tonawanda, yeah, especially my ward. My ward took a beating. You know, Millstream Village was, every street was underwater. I mean, every street except for allegedly growing. It was bad. I grew up in Millstream. I grew up where I grew up. I dealt with this as a kid. You know, I remember bailing water and it was, it was no fun. And I feel for you guys for sure. It's, uh, definitely better things to do on the weekend for sure. I assure you, we will be addressing this issue. It's going to take time. There's no question. You know, it's, you have to take a long, hard, hard look at all of these storm drains. Our sanitary sewers are in top, top shape right now. We spent a lot of money lining these. Uh, as our engineer was talking to you earlier, they are, um, the problems that we occur are a lot of groundwater issues, you know, groundwater issues with the kind of rainfall. It saturates the system. And at some point, as you notice, as the, the rains stop, as they progress, all the sanitary started to back up because everything became, became under pressure, as we know. Uh, these aren't excuses, but they're, it is, they are facts and we will be addressing this. You know, it'd be my mission to make sure moving forward that we're going to start focusing more energy on solving this. focusing more energy on solving this problem. And again, I feel for you. I will not, unfortunately, I apologize, I will not be able to make that six o'clock. I didn't meet with you guys all on Saturday, so I did have a lot of positive feedback. And all of that feedback will be addressed as well. Mr. Fix, I will be looking into why it took so long for your basement to be pumped. A lot of things came in as priority that day, and the fire department was overwhelmed with calls for basements to be pumped out. And I'll look into those calls and when they were addressed, for sure. And again, I do apologize on behalf of the city, and we are here for you, for sure. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Newman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to thank the council, or the, our legal department and the council for passing the vacancy policy, just dealing with the hub. I know on, on quite a few events down the hub, especially Food Truck Thursdays, there has been some issues down there, so it gives our police department a little bit more teeth to kind of deal with, with vacancy down at the hub. So I thank them. And I know that there's a few residents that came in after our, our city engineer spoke. The city is, will have invested over $20 million in our sanitary sewers. The problem you have is that you can fix Hoover Dam all you want, but if you don't take care of all of the cracks, water is still going to leak out of the dam. Case in point, our city sanitary sewers, once we are done, are going to be watertight. We cannot control personal sewer laterals on residential property. And if water is getting in through those laterals that are overwhelming our system, there is, currently in New York State, we have no recourse to go after homeowners who have broken sewer laterals. That might change once we get done with our project. New York State might come out and say, the municipality has to inspect sewer laterals on a yearly basis on residential property. And I personally don't want to see that get to that point because I think that's big government kind of sticking their nose in where it doesn't belong. But if there are cracks in residential sewers getting into our system, our system does not have the capacity, and the city engineer eloquently explained that during the preview. And I think it was one of the residents brought up, German, kind of heard things in a perspective. We got more rain than German did in 12 hours, and they had 150 people dead. Those that don't know, I'm a meteorologist at the airport. I look back 150 years, we have not had a 24-hour rainfall of this amount, period, and we had it in 12 hours. We have not had a two-week rainfall of eight and a half inches ever. Our normal rainfall for summer is about nine inches. We've gotten that much in two weeks. There isn't a system in the country, except for maybe the tropical south, that could deal, that can deal with this amount of rainwater coming down at once, especially when our overflows, which are Eloquent Creek, Two-Mountain Creek, and the Niagara River all rise as well, then that water has no way to escape. Until those levels go down, it's the same way in the south. Whenever they get heavy flooding events, the levels go down and the rivers go down because those are their emergency, emergency ways to evacuate water, whether it be waste or stormwater from city, town, or municipality. So I, I don't think it's fair to say that the city hasn't done its due diligence because by the end of next year, we will spend over $20 million dollars in making our sanitary sewer watertight. I feel bad for the residents. I went to three of my daughter's houses to help pump out their basements. I was running around all over the place. Some of it was freshwater, some of it was sewage. I don't have an easy answer, other than we will have spent a lot of money on this issue by the end of next year. And when state law allows us to, then we can look into cracked laterals. We're allowed to address downspouts that go into our, into the sanitary sewer. We're allowed to address homes that don't have sump pumps whenever they sell. Sump pump has to be installed before that home is sold. That removes water from our sanitary sewer. That's the reason why a sump pump, New York State requires you to install a sump pump. So I want to thank our fire department, which had over 100 calls to pump out basements and, and did those calls. Our DPW that assisted, our police department. Every available resource was stretched thin in this city. And it wasn't just our city. It was the town, it was Amherst, Grand Island, Niagara Falls, I mean Springfield. So I really, I want to thank the residents that banded together. I want to thank the city employees that were responding to residents' homes that they themselves had a flooded basement, and they couldn't do anything about it because they were out helping residents try to evacuate the water, try to get tree limbs that were down on power lines. I want to thank them on top of the residents that banded together. It really takes a lot to come together in a moment like this, and I'm actually proud to be mayor whenever our city and our city workforce can come together to try to help out as many people as possible during natural disasters. So my hands off to everyone. And last but certainly not least, it's quite a procession up in Niagara Street. Hundreds of freedom riders, Humvees, the wall that heals as over 50,000 dead veterans from the Vietnam War. And while it's wonderful that it's in our city to give all of us here a chance to remember a loved one on that wall, it's also somber that there's a story behind every single name on that wall. And I would encourage everyone to, if you get a chance, go up. The wall will be open 24/7 as of the opening ceremonies on Thursday at noon. Go up, see the walls, talk to the volunteers, see the artifacts that some people have left behind for loved ones at the wall. And those in themselves, if those are my tear jerker, I really don't know what it's so. Please take the time to go up there, check out the wall, and, and pay your respects. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I want to wish a happy birthday to our city clerk, Jim Castle. Over the weekend, he celebrated a birthday. Thank you, Jim, for all you do for the city and for the council. I hope you had a great birthday.
Thank you.
I want to provide an update to the residents on our LED streetlight program or project. Recently, we approved the main street pole submittal, and the asset nodes are coming soon. So we're pretty much on target of where we want to be. And then as soon as we receive the asset nodes, construction can begin. We are anticipating that we will receive the asset nodes in late July. So more to come on that project, but we're certainly moving forward on that. Over the, a couple of days ago, the school district had emailed us just a phenomenal video of Fletcher School, and it included a voiceover by our Skip Johnson from the Historical Society of the Tonawandas. If you have not checked it out, please, it's, it's a, it's a great history lesson of Fletcher School. And I want to thank Skip Johnson and the Historical Society of the Tonawandas and the school district for putting that together. Construction has already begun at Fletcher, but there will be a groundbreaking ceremony next week. But thanks again to both entities for coming together and, and doing that. The mayor had mentioned the walls that heal, the wall that heals has arrived in the city. Please come check it out. It will be here through Sunday. It's absolutely breathtaking, and as the mayor said, you know, there's a story behind each name. So please, take the time, check it out, and, and pay your respects. And the VVA had, do you have the challenge coin? The VVA had sold, raised money for the wall that heals, these challenge coins. So recently, I stopped out and I, I purchased some, and I gave some to the council and to the mayor, and it's just a friendly reminder that this took place in our community, it's something that we should all be proud of. Thank you to all the organizers, the VVA, every person that had a hand in bringing the wall that heals to our community, you should certainly be very proud of. Warriors Walk is going to meet tomorrow at 6:30 at the Band Shell. Come on out for another fun history lesson. Who knows, we may have some surprises in store. I want to thank the residents that had reached out to us over the past couple of days. Over the weekend, I was driving from my sister's house, she lives in the town, and her, and her street was closed, and I was helping her. And I was coming back, and alone behold, I see Councilman Newman standing on the side of the road, talking to some residents on Eloquent Creek. And I stopped and I pulled over, and we were at the Eloquent Creek overflow, and I see our administrative assistant coming out and talking to some DPW workers as well. And we could look, and we could certainly see that it was, it was pumping into the creek. And, you know, and Tom and I, we probably talked about, oh, 100 times that day, the council was all in contact with each other. And, and as, you know, we all spoke, we appreciate you reaching out to us. I think Councilman Mylan, you know, said, you know, we empathize with what you were going through. You know, I too, as the mayor had said, he was helping his daughter out. We were all dealing with our situation as well, and, and trying to be as responsive as we could for our residents as well. But I want to thank Mr. Newman, our administrative assistant. It was nice, even in the pouring rain, to see everybody out, and I appreciate the residents for coming together. Normally, if this is the first council meeting you've been here in, haven't been in a while, our department heads, you know, will be in touch with them, but normally, they, they're not here for council meetings. And I think it's, it's a good reminder of how important our department heads play in this, and, you know, kudos to our city engineer for being here tonight. Certainly wasn't required to, but we recognize that some of our residents had, had a lot of questions, and I do not hold an engineer's degree. I wouldn't even sit up here and begin to tell you about laterals or overflows, and I rely on our, our department head to do that. So I really want to thank Jason for, for coming out tonight and talking with the residents. You know, he, he was very responsive during this, as all the department heads. We were in touch with them, so I just, I want to thank them. I know they were certainly extremely busy. As the mayor said, we had over 100 phone calls in a short period of time. So, and I know Councilman Newman's going to look into some of those unique situations, but, you know, we understand and we'll get through it as best we can. With that said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Newman. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thanks for coming out. Have a great night.
For those virtually in the meeting, we are ending the call at this time. A great evening, and thanks for ending our call.